Our regular city council meeting for February 2nd, 2021 is now in session. First on the agenda, Councilmember Whitaker will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Holy Father, thank you for bringing each of us here tonight. You care about each of us beyond measure. You have a purpose for us in this world, in this city, and in this very room. Thank you for the men and women who have gone before us, who have worked to form not a perfect, but a more perfect union. Thank you that I have been given the opportunity in this moment to worship you freely. Father, bless those that are here this evening by sharing your peace with them. Bless our city employees and staff. Protect them and grant them strength, courage, and wisdom as they perform their daily duties. Bless our residents and our businesses. Help each to thrive in 2021, and may we all be blessed with a COVID-free community soon, with handshakes and hugs being the new normal. Be with us tonight in the big issues and the small. Guide our words as we speak and our thoughts as we listen. Help us as elected officials to understand the issues more clearly and to make decisions that reflect the desires of our community for its betterment. Thank you again, Father, for all our blessings, and help us be a blessing to those we serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitaker. All right, guests, staff, and council, while seated, it's perfectly fine for you to remove your mask, but while you approach the podium or depart our chambers, we ask that you place your face masks back on. And before we get started, I'd like to introduce Caleb Rither, Boy Scout, Troop 341. Thanks for joining us. If you please stand up. He's here for citizenship and community merit badge. Welcome, welcome again. All right, first on the agenda, our City Secretary Brenda Dennis will administer the oath of office to our new Mayor Pro temp, Jill Whitaker.
Yes ma'am, if you raise your right hand to repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jill Whitaker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
And the City Assurts Mayor Pro Temp.
Of the City of Assurts Mayor Pro Temp.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitutional laws of the United States.
The constitutional laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Temp Whitaker. Councilmember Scott, thank you for serving as our Mayor Pro Temp. Thank you for stepping in, thank you. All right. We are presentations today, we have a proclamation recognizing Career and Technology Education Month. Ms. Garcia, I kept saying Ms. Garcia, Ms. Garcia, Garcia, well, and Ms. Massey, if you please join me at the podium. Whereas February 2021 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association of Career and Technical Education, whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain an academic, technical, and skills necessary for true career readiness. Whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education, increases their engagement and their achievement. Whereas career and technical education provides students with a career opportunities early in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways. Whereas leaders from businesses and industries nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing ETE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, and information technology. Whereas career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industrial-recognized credentials. Whereas career and technical education programs ensure that employers have access to qualified, thriving workforce, ensuring America continues to have a strong and competitive economy. Therefore, I, Ralph Gutierrez, Mayor of the City Assurts, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month in Assurts, and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in this community, and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. Thank you for joining us here today. If you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you, council, and thank you, the City of Assurts, and especially the EDC, for the wonderful partnership that you've offered, the opportunity for all of our students and our staff within the district. We're truly blessed to have such a community that backs our school district and our students for all the wonderful opportunities. And we just wanted to share a little bit about CTE and what we offer our students. Collectively in our districts, we have roughly about 7,000 students that go through our CTE courses every day. So we see a wide range of students, whether they're in person or face-to-face, we're enhancing the lives of those students every day. We offer CTSOs, which are career and student organizations, and those include Business Professionals of America, DECA, FFA, FCCLA, Future Educators of Texas, Skills USA, and the Technology Student Association. So we have lots of opportunities for our students built in within our CTE program so they can gain those hands-on, real-world experiences while they're part of our program. Within our district, we are blessed to offer 12 different pathways, and those pathways can range everything from cybersecurity to healthcare to IT to advanced manufacturing. And we have a wide range for every student for their passion, and our goal is to make sure that our students are career-ready by the time that they actually leave us by giving them those hands-on opportunities within our district and with our local community partners to build that partnership. The other thing that we are able to do is we offer industry-based certifications for our students, with those are recognized through the businesses across the state and the U.S. that our students are able to actually leave and graduate by the time they leave us. So we have students that are leaving as certified medical billing and coding specialists, nursing assistants, we have a wide range of them, welding technicians. So we have a lot of different programs that we offer them. So we're very blessed and thankful to have such a wonderful community that stands behind our CTE program and our school district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Report. I'd like to go ahead and recognize Mr. Daniel Frenchy-Bourgeois.
Nailed it.
Oh, right.
Nailed it.
And Byseher Dingwitz. Floor is yours, sir.
That's what I like to hear. Perfect. Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for having me this evening. After passing of Resolution 6R35 back in 2006, you established my committee, and it's up to me to report to you on how we've been doing this past last year, right? Let's you know that we're not just getting together and drinking beers and hanging out, right? So I'm just gonna let you know. So the Historical Preservation Committee, we've been working hard, like we do every year, right? So this is just another reiteration of what we've been doing in years past. Basically, I'm gonna present to you a summary of our annual 2020 report. I'm not gonna go through it slide by slide and lecture by lecture, word by word, but the full report will be available to you in the historic archive. I just wanna go over the highlights and the topic sentences and the like as we go through it. For our goals for the calendar year of 2020, our objectives center around three specific topics, which include designations of historical properties, publications, which we publish quarterly, and joint organization initiatives that we try to press within the local community. We try to do at least one a quarter, but stretching along, due to COVID, right, and community get-togethers and the like have been have been more difficult than in years past. Historic recognition entails designation of heritage neighborhoods and landmarks and properties. To date, we've had three neighborhoods that we've granted designation as historic landmarks, and up to about now, we've got 30 properties total. Another one we're really looking at is 800 Roy Richards Road. The current owner is kind of apprehensive, I would say, to designate their property as a historic landmark. I'm not done working with them yet, I'm not ready to let that fish get off the line just yet, so we're gonna keep pressing that topic, so to continue pressing as much as we can, right? Other historic recognition properties we've gone ahead and talked about is publication projects that include quarterly newsletters and the like. We publish the remembrance articles that come out quarterly, we published a book, and I will admit that our sales of this book during December for Christmas, we topped almost $400 in sales of That Bad Boy just alone, so we're really making progress behind. We've also had a proposal of having a podcast, of trying to get some sort of audio rather than just textual ways of preserving historic remarks from local members of our community and the like. We haven't really got that off the ground yet, so we're probably gonna table it till a later time, but it's also another thing we're looking at, right, rather than just textual objects. I don't know if you noticed or not, but we were also the headliner in the last shirts magazine, right? As you saw our caboose there on the front page, on the front cover, right? The hardest worker member of our little community is Dean Words, and he was the headliner of that article as well. So if you haven't read it yet, you're far behind. Other joint initiatives throughout the community, last year we worked on the Love Where You Live campaign, where we helped out Aviation Heights. It was a bit of a backwards assessment, as you see me up there cleaning somebody's house with a power washer in the rain, so it was it was clean-as-you-go kind of initiative. But hey, it worked out, we had a really amazing turnout, we had over 40 organizations and over 400 volunteers, so it was a really big event. Biff Busby's is another one we're looking at there, is the top middle slide, is we're gonna add some artifacts to them, as well as, because you have, you notice, we've also had plenty of objects throughout the local chambers and other avenues of city government, we've placed other, you know, they were like pictures and the like of historical events and figures and the like. We've also populated the caboose that you've, that was the headliner of the magazine, so you saw that on FM 78, just in front of the county building. We've also invented the QR code, the stamped on the front. We were worried that with COVID and the like, that people weren't gonna take the tours as seriously as they could, take advantage of as they could in years past, so now you can just walk up, snap your cellphone picture, and it'll take you through a complete tour of the caboose. It includes all the artifacts and even history and how we got the caboose there in the first place, so lots, lots of good stuff coming from that. Lower left-hand corner, you also see that we completed the mirror on the lawyer's office, it used to be tagged with graffiti and the like from one of the high schooler's final projects there. So we wanted to pretty it up there a little bit, so we slapped That Bad Boy on there and is looking great, welcoming everybody into our community down, when you leave base, right, coming down FM 78. One of my favorite shows on Netflix is this thing called Hunting Hitler, right? They try to trace him out of Europe after he left, they think that possibly he didn't die in World War II, and that he left and left to Argentina. So what they were worried about is tracing it from A to B, and it's extremely hard, right? You can follow any path, and they're multiplicative, right? So you could say that I left from here through Canada and came down, I went through South Africa and down. What's easier to do is work it from both angles, you start from the end, and you start from the beginning, and you try to meet in the middle. So this is what we're trying to do here. Our sister organization in France, we're trying to figure out how Assurts really got started. So the best way to do that is start with the clues that we have here in Assurts, start with the clues that we have of them leaving France and trying to meet in the middle. How did they get here through Texas? How'd they get here through Kansas? How'd they get here through the port in New York? Well, cool, well, how did they leave France? Did they go through Spain? Did they go through Italy? Did they hop a boat through the Med, right? So it's way easier to make that connection in the other direction. Conclusion, the committee has met our objective that we've always set for 2020, and we're looking ahead for 2021 to do even bigger and better things. Questions you got for me?
All right, I'll open it up for council. Any questions, any? Yes, Councilmember Scott.
Wow, y'all did a really good job, and I loved your book, if you don't mind me saying so. That was so excellent. For your designations, the three neighborhoods, there are Aviation Heights, and what were the other two?
Dean, can you answer that one for me?
The neighborhoods are South Assurts, Central City, which is off of 78 on First Street, the first neighborhood ever, dedicated to Aviation Heights, and then Carmel, Southern, on 48th and Orange.
Okay, very good, thank you. And then, when you were talking about the podcasts and the publications, I just had a thought, like, the book was easy on the eyes, I think it would be very easy on the ears, and I wanted to make the recommendation of maybe having an audio version of that, where people, I guess that's what you're getting with the podcasts, but like the audiobooks, that'd be fantastic. But man, what a good job, congratulations. I'm very proud of y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Dala?
Just wanna say thanks to you guys for volunteering and doing all the work that you do. You know, everybody thinks, you know, Assurts Incorporated, 1958, that there's not a whole lot of history there, but there is quite a bit, and, you know, and we're probably a little late to the game to preserve some of the really old history, and I'm glad you guys are digging in and trying to find what is still out there. Regarding the property there on Roy Richards, somehow knowing your personality, Frenchy, I think you're gonna get that done.
I think one of the hardest things to conceptualize is that when I was growing up as a kid, I'd ride in the car with grandma to the store or whatever, right, and she would listen to the oldies, right, the songs that she grew up with. Those songs are as old to me as the songs that I listened to in high school are old to my son, right? So now they are the oldies, right? The amount of time has passed, right? So you can't just chalk it up and say, well, that happened 40 years ago, that's old. Well, then what's your definition of old, right? So not just what happened, happened, what happens today is something that also needs to be captured. So my committee and I are also working on capturing COVID as it's happening now, 30, 15, 20 years from now, that's gonna be an event, and you're gonna wanna have that copied. Everybody knows what happened in World War II, it's a whole nother story to find the soldier's diary, you know, what happened during the war, right? So that's another angle that we wanna preserve.
Yes, Councilmember Scaglila.
Yeah, thank you so much. Your enthusiasm is infectious, and you really do have an interesting perspective on history. I was on this council when we established the Historic Committee, and I see Dean, thank you so very much, Dean. Good job.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Davis?
I'd just like, again, thanks for the presentation and the update. Something I didn't hear on there that I'm very grateful for is the Historical Committee, and Mr. Words have been very helpful with the progress that we're working towards on Main Street, making sure that we get it right and we keep some of that old-time feel, that local, small-town feeling on Main Street as we move forward. So again, thanks for all you guys have done, and I'm still looking forward to all the things that are yet to come.
I'd like to also say thank you. Everything that you do, like you indicated today, what's happening today is tomorrow's history, and it's very important for us to capture that. We are rich in history, we just don't know what that is some of the time. I've been here for 30 years, and it has really changed quite a bit. In fact, I spoke to a firefighter that was a volunteer firefighter back in 1954 here in Assurts, and explained some of the challenges on carrying that water hose on his, on his back just to put out a brush fire. So things were certainly very different before we even became a city, and thank you again for capturing that, appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
We'll move on to employee recognition, I'd like to recognize economic development.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We are very excited to introduce the newest member of the Assurts Economic Development Corporation team, Mr. Colin Sherman. Colin comes to us with a bachelor's degree in political science from University of New Mexico. He comes with a master's degree of public administration from the University of Texas El Paso. In terms of professional background, Colin comes to us with tremendous amount of skill. He He served as the Director of Business Intelligence for the San Antonio Economic Development Foundation, and has provided economic development analysis services for municipalities around the country and the region. So we're very excited to have Colin join the team. With that, Colin, if you'd like to say a few words?
Mayor, councilmembers, happy to be back. I was here previously, and I did work for the EDC a few years ago. Jumped at the opportunity to work here again, so it's a pleasure to serve the Shirts community.
Colin, welcome. Welcome again, and glad to have you. I mean, economic development is very important to our city, and let's get it done. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Emergency Management Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dr. Brown. Tonight, the EMS department would like to introduce to you two new employees that we have. First up, I have Hunter Valdez. He's a full-time paramedic with us. He started January 4th of this year. He grew up in the San Antonio area, but currently resides in New Braunfels. Hunter attended the University of Texas Health and Science Center here in San Antonio. I obtained his paramedic certification last year. He's been in EMS for a total of three years now, looks forward to a long, successful career here at Shirts. In his off time, Hunter enjoys woodworking and fishing, so please welcome me in joining Hunter to our department.
All right, Hunter. Mike's yours.
Nice to meet y'all. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the community of Shirts, all of y'all, and it's been a pleasure to meet all of the faces of Shirts faculty. Very nice.
Well, welcome. Welcome to our team.
Next up for you, I have William Fowler IV. We hired him as a part-time paramedic on January 4th also. William started his childhood in the Denver area, spent his late childhood in the Phoenix area, moved to Shirts in 2011, and then spent nine years there before moving to the Stone Oak area. William obtained his associate's degree from Northeast Lakeview, and went to the University of Texas Health Science Center as well, and obtained his paramedic certification, and he is currently enrolled as a pre-med at UTSA. William's been in EMS for two years now. As you can imagine, working full-time and going to school with pre-med, he doesn't have much free time for any hobbies, so welcome, William, to the EMS department.
I'd like to just say that I look forward to serving this community.
Thank you again. Welcome to our team. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next is Parks and Recs.
I'm Lauren Schramm, Parks and Recreation Director. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing Annalise Miranda, our new administrative assistant. Annalise comes to us from the Dallas-Fort Worth area. She always wanted to call central Texas home. She's got extended family in the area, so we were at the right place at the right time to snag her into Shirts. She worked at Reunion Tower in Dallas, so she has a special event background, helped plan their New Year's Eve fireworks show, did a bunch of wedding proposals at the tower, and so that strong special event background is really a compliment to our team. She has a bachelor's degree in communications with a minor in business. She hopes to pursue a certification and project manager this coming year. Her favorite sport is volleyball, so that's great. We're going to have a volleyball tournament sometime soon. She enjoys playing and watching most other sports. She also loves to travel with friends, spend time with family. She's only been here about a month. She's already volunteered at our vaccine clinic. She'll be there again this week, so we're really great, really happy to have her on our team. With that, I'll let her have to say a few words.
Hello. I'm thankful for all of the warm welcomes I've received from not only the Parks Department, but from all city employees, and I'm excited for my future here at the City of Shirts.
Welcome. Welcome. Next is Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dr. Brown. We have three new Public Works employees. They're all street workers. I'll start off with Bryce Birch. Bryce started on January 19th. He's learning the job of a street worker one, which, learning all the city and what we do. He's currently also training with our Sign Department. Bryce was born July 31st, 1988, Virginia. He lived in North Carolina until 2003, where he then moved to Shirts, Texas. He graduated from Samuel Clemens High School, spent a year at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi. Bryce and his wife Ashley were married last year, bought their first house in Shirts in January 2020. They're expecting a baby boy in April. Ashley's first son, Keon, lives with them, and he is 12 years old. Bryce likes to shoot hoops, grill, throw darts, play frisbee, golf, and play video games in his free time. Bryce Birch.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I just want to say thank you for having me. I guess I graduated from high school here in Shirts, bought my first house here in Shirts, and I'm starting my family here in Shirts, so I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve my community, so thank you.
Awesome. Great to have you.
Next, we have Roberto Garcia. He also started January 19th in the Streets Department and is currently training in our Street Sweeper. He's doing very well, too. I believe he's out on his own now, correct? He was born in Hardlinsen, Texas. He was raised in northwest Ohio, worked at Whirlpool Corp. for 18 years. He had his house built in Selma, Texas, moved in in 2006. He has two sons and a wife of 42 years. He loves to listen to music, go to movies, and travel. Roberto Garcia.
Welcome. Welcome. Mike's all yours, sir.
Thank you. I would like to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to work for you, and I will give you 110%.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Next, we have Cole Moody. He started again on the 19th, and he's learning our streets. He was born in Sakeen, Texas. He went to high school, Shirts School District, until 10th grade. He was in homeschools 11th and 12th, and then graduated from Northeast Christian Academy in 2003. He's always grown up in the country and been around horses and cattle his whole life. What he likes to do, he has won 12 saddles, over 880 belt buckles, and a lot of money roping calves. My family member, or his family members, is Leroy Moody, which his father works for the City of Shirts also, his grandpa, Leroy Moody Senior, and he has two sisters, Cody Hartness and Charlotte Pierceall. He likes to rodeo and rope calves, and likes to hunt and fish. Cole Moody.
Welcome. Welcome. Mike's all yours.
Thank y'all for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
Oh, thanks. Thanks for being part of our team. Next, we have the Shirts-Sakeen Local Government Corporation, SSLGC.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have with me Valentin T. Ruiz Jr. He holds a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from Texas A&amp;M University. Yeah, I was waiting for the whoops. Val began working with us on January 4th as our Assistant General Manager. He has been blessed to work for the San Antonio Water System for 35 and 1/2 years. He started out at SAAAS as an entry-level engineer and worked in various departments as he climbed the management ladder. He started at entry-level engineer, then moved up to licensed professional engineer, then to construction inspector, and then supervisor, then manager, then director, and then finally vice president. Departments included construction inspection, water production, maintenance and operations, 24/7 operations and maintenance, and water distribution, wastewater collection systems, customer service, meter reading, call center, and wastewater treatment operations. For his personal life, Val has been happily married for 38 and 1/2 years to his wife, Deborah. They have three children, five grandchildren, with the sixth grandchild due this summer. He's very excited about that. Besides watching all sports movies and being a golf fanatic, he's an avid golf player, and he said anytime anyone wants to play, just give them a call. He's always available. He still works part-time at TPC San Antonio on the weekends, and yeah, he was retired for five years before joining us at SSLGC, so we are incredibly excited to have him on our team.
Welcome. Welcome to our team. Mike's all yours, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity, and it's taken all my energy to follow this lady and all her duties. So we're building a good team, and we're running right after each other, and thank you all.
Well, thank you. Thank you for providing service to our community. All right, we'll continue with city events and announcements, announcements of upcoming city events.
Good evening, Council. Charles Combe, Assistant City Manager. On Friday, February 5th, we have the City Council Workshop from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Evo. The overall theme is creating the complete city, and the question we are asking council to consider is, is the City of Shirts successfully creating the complete city as envisioned in our strategic plan? On Tuesday, February 9th is our next regularly scheduled council meeting. March 4th through May 6th, the Shirts Police Department is hosting the Citizen Police Academy, starting on March 4th and ending on May 6th. The classes are every Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The location of the class is still to be determined depending on the size of the class. Applications are available at the police department or by visiting the Shirts website at shirts.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Combe. Next announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Dr. Brown.
They've done a refresh of all the photos in Building 2 and the hallways. They did a fantastic job, and that was really Devin Christiansen who did that, Linda Klepper assisted, but they really took the ball, ran, and I think they did a great job, and we're going to finish the EDC hallway here in the next few months. Also, just wanted to recognize Public Works for a few of the projects they've recently completed or almost completed. West Chet was from Valley Forge to Gettysburg, and that's... ..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Make it so that police can't beat the tar out of kids, or anyone for that matter. I was asked last time, what would I do in this situation if I were a police officer? I'd start by not assuming everyone's guilty. As citizens, we all have that right. I'd start by not taking the law into my own hands and executing punishment for a supposed Well, they might have threatened the officer's life. That's not the point. That's their job. It is their job to protect and serve even the people that they are arresting. If they can't do that, they shouldn't have the job, period. Stop being against big government while licking the boots on people's necks. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Proton Whitaker, please call our next guest.
Yes, Maggie Titterington.
Just wanted to say we had a very successful first community event this year. I want to thank the council that came out and participated. They said it couldn't be done, but yes, it can be done. We had our Health and Wholeness Fair. Our sponsor, Methodist Hospital Northeast, gave a great presentation on COVID updates about vaccinations. Leslie Mouton gave her breast cancer survivor testimony. We had another speaker about dementia. The best part about this was, is yes, the in-person attendance was not as high as past years. We had 200 people, though, show up in quite the wide variety, scattered out throughout their three hours, never surpassed the 50% capacity, had eight-foot drapes in between booths. Everybody said they felt safe, all the surveys that came in, so we were really, really happy. Online, this is the first time we've done this, we had an online presence of an additional 327 people. So if you count that all, it was over 500 people total that got served by the medical community, so loved it, which leads me to our next big event coming up, the Taste. We are pivoting that event, and I'm actually equally excited to share the fact that this will be a month of taste. So instead of being three hours at Rotama Park, we are extending it the entire month of March. And what we're going to do is we are going to have a game card. We have 25 vendors participating, and so for $5, people will come by the chamber, get their card, which is a lot better than a $25 ticket, and they're going to actual travel, travel to the different locations that are basically between Sibolo and I'd say probably Universal City, Live Oak, couple ones in San Antonio. But within that whole month, they're going to go visit the vendors that they choose to go visit. They'll get a sticker once they make a purchase at one of the restaurants or the beverage providers, and there's no minimum, there's no it has to be five or 10. They could go get a nice tea at Abel's Restaurant, he's participating, and they'll get a sticker. The end of the month, they turn in the whatever amount that they filled in, and they will be entered in four drawings. If they go, I believe it is between three and seven vendors in that month, they're registered for $100 cash. Another sectioned amount, it'll be 250 cash, 500 cash, and the biggest prize is 1,000 cash. So we thought that would be an incentive for them to get out. It keeps the economy going. It keeps them visiting the people and keeping the food going. Plus, it's not a hardship on the actual restaurants that they have to take their staff away and go set up and do the food samples. People are going to them. So like I said, very excited about that, something new. And the last thing is we have a lot of ribbon cuttings and plaque presentations, the first one being next Monday at Authentic Cuts on Main Street. It's at 10:30. All of these are at 10:30 in the morning. We've got one at 11:03 on the 10th, and this will all come to you in a calendar. On the 22nd is Tiny Jazz at the Kramer House, and the 24th is Amy's All-Star Dance Studio, who has never had a ribbon cutting, and they're celebrating, I believe, 20 years here in Shirts. So a lot of things going on, very excited. Thank you all for your time.
Ms. Maggie, address, please.
Maggie Titterington, 1730 Shirts Parkway.
Thank you. All right, next on the list?
Dr. Miguel Vasquez.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Dr. Miguel Vasquez, and I live at 9320 Marion Way. So I am here representing the Shirts Sibolo Cemetery Association. And what we wanted to let you know is that there is a new historical site within the city limits of Shirts. The Texas Historical Commission recently designated the Shirts Sibolo Cemetery as a Texas Historic Cemetery. There you go, you got it. Now, that designation was, or came about because of two main reasons. One is that the cemetery itself is over 100 years old. We were talking about history a little while ago, so it's over 100 years old. And also the significance of the early farm workers to this area as well. So we know about the German immigration, which took place in 1850s. German families came here, started establishing farms. As their farms grew, got larger, more prosperous, they needed labor at that point, and so subsequently there was a Mexican immigration, which took place in the later 1800s. So for our cemetery, the first interment, we believe it took place in late 1890s. Now, that's all by oral history, unfortunately, but at least we have a little history from that standpoint. So luckily, it's been maintained by the ancestors, and it survived to this point. So the association now is in the process of refurbishing the cemetery, cutting out all the undergrowth and so forth. I don't know if you've been out there recently, lately, or at any time, but it's a whole lot different now because of volunteers, we've gotten a volunteer group together, and they're doing wonders in terms of restoring the grounds. And I might add also that this cemetery is one of nine cemeteries in the city, which are designated also by the city as historical ancestral resting places. So these are all cemeteries that basically are about the same age, I'll say, early 1900s, and they all run along Highway 78, along Sibolo Creek. So that's our information, and come out and visit us.
Just one question for you. The actual place of this cemetery, because there is several on 78, which one are we?
Exactly. Well, there's nine cemeteries along Sibolo Creek, and of course, they were all established by the different farms, right? So this particular cemetery is on 78 and River Road. So if you go through River Road, and then there's Bubbling Springs. Actually, our neighbor is CCMA, Sibolo Creek Municipal Authority.
Okay.
So we're right next door to them.
Yeah, because I'm
So that one was the old Dietz Farm.
Okay, okay, I know which one you, okay, thank you for the point of reference.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Dennis, is there any hearing of residents submitted in writing?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered self-explanatory, and information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, minutes, consideration or action regarding the approval of our minutes of our regular meeting on January 26, 2021. Item number two, resolution number 21R13, consideration or action approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas approving employee policies. Item number three, resolution number 21R12, consideration or action approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas authorizing and approving a professional service agreement with MS Engineering for various on-call engineering services in all matters in connection therewith. Item number four, ordinance number 21A04, consideration or action of an ordinance on a request for voluntary annexation of approximately 142 acres of land located 3,500 feet southwest of the intersection of Doran Lane and Bell North Drive, Comal County, Texas. And this is our final reading. And item number five, resolution number 21S03, consideration or action upon a request to rezone approximately 142 acres of land on manufacturing District Light, that's M-1. The subject property is located 3,500 feet southwest of the intersection of Doran Lane and Bell North Drive, Comal County, Texas, and this is also our final reading. Council, do any of these need to be removed for separate action? Yes, Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, number two and three, I had some questions on those.
Any others, council? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items one, four, and five?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilmember Scott and second by Mayor Proton Whitaker. Any comments, any questions? If not, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
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 All right, we have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. So we'll move on to discussion item number two. Let's go back to that one. Resolution number 21R13, consideration or action approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas approving employee policies.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Lindsay Cox. I'm the HR manager. I'll be filling in for Jessica this afternoon and happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Councilmember Scott?
Yes, thank you. Whenever I was looking for the vacation policy for the years of service, it's broken out by the first year, and then two through 10 and 11-plus, and there seemed to be a discrepancy till I dug a little deeper and read it in more detail. So for fire and EMS doing 24-hour shifts, it's, I didn't do the percent higher, but it's substantially higher. So the first year, they get 144 hours compared to a regular employee at 96 hours, 2 to 10, 180 compared to 120, and 11-plus, 240 compared to 160. So someone coming in gets 3.6 weeks, then 4.5, and then six weeks for the 20, is that correct?
It's actually, it's based on the equivalent of hours worked.
Correct.
At the bottom of the chart, it details the 24-hour shift employees are viewed as a 12-hour shift, and then all regular full-time employees are viewed as an eight-hour shift.
Okay.
So if you divide the 144 by 12, it comes out to 12 shifts or days, and then the same with the 96 for licensed peace officers. If you just divide the 96 by eight, it comes out to 12. So essentially, we're viewing it by days or shifts off, and it would be 12, 15, and then 20.
Okay, and so that was my second question, and I'm not questioning the equity of it or anything like that. I just was wondering, like, the 24-hour shifts, thank you for explaining the 12-hour shifts. And I think, I don't know for a fact, but I think the firefighters, I've heard of them being on for 24 hours at a time and sleeping at the station and all that. Is that a thing, or am I misinformed?
So they're on 48 96s currently, but I'm not aware that they're off and sleeping at the station.
So they're on 12 hours, and they go home and come back?
No, ma'am. They work 48 hours in a row, and then they're off 96.
Wow, that's tough. So hence the augmented vacation time, because they really need it. Thank you for answering that. That was great. And can you finally, wow, good job, y'all. That was good. Can you explain the sick leave pool to me?
Sure. So employees that have, and that was actually a policy that was recently updated, employees that have an approved FMLA claim and exhaust all leave, so all types of leave, which would be sick, vacation, comp time, awarded leave, are eligible for the utilization of the sick leave pool. We have imposed limits on that leave so that there is a maximum benefit that they can receive from the pool. But essentially, it's put in place so employees that do have to go out for an FMLA qualifying event have the ability to receive pay while they're out if they do exhaust all their leave time.
And so is that voluntary, and they give anything for that, or is that just a benefit that the city gives us?
It is a benefit that the city provides, but it's only funded by hours from employees who leave the city. So if I retire from the city, since sick leave is not paid out, I have the ability to donate those hours back to the city's sick leave pool. So we do have the ability to run out of those hours, so it's all dependent on how much leave time is available in that bank. So we do ask upon separation of employees, it's on a voluntary basis, if they choose to donate their accrued sick leave to the sick leave pool for employees to use.
Boy, that's very good intelligence to have. Thank you. I had no idea that was how it worked out. Going back, so they're on 48 hours?
Yes, ma'am.
So do they, they don't sleep for 48 hours? Do they start hallucinating? I mean, how does that work?
I'm not sure. I'm assuming they get time
Really? Wow.
Called nap time.
Yeah, so after 10:00 p.m., they do go to bed, and based on calls, so, you know, sometimes they make it till 2:00 in the morning without a call, sometimes they make it till 5:00 in the morning, so it's just they get up and respond to calls throughout the night. But they do sleep from 10:00 p.m. on.
Thank you. I'm glad you do, and that does make sense to me. Thank you, Officer Cade. All righty, I'm good, Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Dollar?
I have a question on the vacation leave there, 4.3.2. I certainly understand the use it or lose it idea of that. It says here on September 30th of each year, all accrued vacation time in excess of the amount authorized will be dropped from the vacation leave roster. And so I was just, you know, thinking how that would apply, and I know that we have several departments that are pretty small, you know, engineering, you know, planning, and so, you know, have we had instances where we've had somebody that's had a vacation planned, and somebody leaves or goes out sick, and that vacation gets canceled, and then they wind up losing their vacation time?
So we do have a piece in this policy that allows employees to request an extension on that vacation. In the instance, their department is short-staffed, and that, of course, is approved by the city manager.
Okay.
Or in any circumstance to where we had COVID, and we weren't able to take vacations like we had planned, there was the ability for employees to reach out to the city manager and request an extension.
Good. You know, the vacation time is a valuable thing to have, and I'm glad we're making sure that we don't take it away from them just because we're shorthanded.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh.
Now, do you want to be recognized, Councilmember Scott, or?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number 21R13?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion by Mayor Proton Whitaker and second by Councilmember Dollar. Council, any other comments, questions? Now, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll move on to discussion item number three, resolution number 21R12, consideration or action approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas authorizing and approving professional service agreement with MS Engineering for various on-call engineering services in all matters in connection therewith. Councilmember Scott, you called this one out, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So I was just trying to understand the relationship. Is MM a third-party vendor for the City of Shirts? Because when I'm reading this contract, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I'm Scott McLown, the Assistant Director of Public Works. So yes, the M&amp;S Engineering is an outside engineering firm that the city can contract with if we approve this resolution.
Okay, I was just asking because this looked rather generic, and I saw the strike-throughs, and I saw it looks like it's a work in progress. When I got to page 173, and I was reading the amounts payable to the engineer for reimbursable expenses will be project-specific, internal expenses actually incurred or allocated by an engineer, plus all invoiced external reimbursable expenses allocatable to specific project, the latter multiplied by a factor of blank. That's a big blank.
Yes, so what the agreement that's included in there is our base master services contract agreement. So in that agreement, we'll get M&amp;S, and the city will sign that agreement, and then as projects come up, then we actually do a task order that does things like define the scope and define the fee. So there are some generic spots in that master services agreement. That scope and fee on each instance is defined in that task order contract, which is in addition, it's an exhibit in the master service agreement, but those things are defined later on. So all this master service agreement does is just enters us into an agreement that we can contract with them if a project comes up.
Okay, and so in each specific instance, y'all would bring the project to city council, is that correct?
So if it's over $50,000, so just like the rest of the purchasing policy for the city, if it's expenditure that's over $50,000, then we have to bring it. If it's under $50,000, then that's just city manager signature. So those task orders that are less than $50,000 can be executed by Dr. Brown without council approval.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, council, any other comments, questions? Now, do I have a motion to approve resolution number 21R12?
So move. Second.
We have a second, okay. Motion's been made by Councilmember Skagliola, second by Councilmember Brown. Council, any comments, questions? If not, let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objections, motion passes. All right, our city secretary, Brenda Dennis, will now provide us with a roll call confirmation on consent agenda items one, four, and five, and discussion items of two and three. Ms. Dennis?
Yes, consent agenda items one, four, and five. A motion was made by Councilmember Scott, seconded by Mayor Proton Whitaker. Mayor Proton Whitaker, council members Davis, Scott, Dollar, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no, motion passed. Item number two, resolution 21R13, a motion was made by Mayor Proton Whitaker, seconded by Councilmember Dollar. Mayor Proton Whitaker, council members Davis, Scott, Dollar, Skagliola, Hayward, and Brown voted yes. No one voted no, motion passed. Item number three, resolution number 20R12, a motion was made by Councilmember Skagliola, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Mayor Proton Whitaker, council member Scott, excuse me, council members Davis, Scott, Dollar, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no, motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. All right, we'll continue with a workshop discussion and update regarding the COVID-19 virus and our current ordinance number 20H18, declaration of local disaster. Ms. Hall, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Summer Hall, Emergency Management Coordinator, and I'll be bringing you the numbers this evening in addition to updates on our COVID vaccination clinic. So to start off on the vaccination update, we did receive allocations of Moderna doses this week. We did receive those needed to do the second doses from the initial vaccinations back at the beginning of January, in addition to additional first-dose allocations. So today was a pretty active day in doing those signups and working through getting those signups scheduled for Thursday, as the bulk of when those first-dose allocations will be scheduled. We were able to accomplish 75% of the appointments to be scheduled through the internet with an additional 25% that were handled via a call center. As we do each week, we've identified some opportunities for places that we can improve. We had, we did struggle a little bit with internet connections and phone system capacity and things like that today, as did Seguin. We partnered with some joint We partnered with some joint messaging this week, and, and so we had a lot of traffic on both the Internet and the phone systems today. So we'll be looking, on Monday, we'll be working on, after we get through the vaccination clinics, we'll be doing a hot wash to evaluate some additional opportunities to make some modifications that will help us work through that a little bit better next time, just taking what we know about the, each situation and trying to, to further develop that. So, but our signup system as of today is full. We are, we do have full appointments on both the Internet and the phone availability. The current numbers in the area, the Guadalupe County is at 806 active cases, the City of Shirts is at 122, Bear County is at 23,942, Comal County is at 667. So you'll see as a general, while Guadalupe County went up a little bit this week, generally the trend is starting to show that it's going down again. You'll see later on, when we get to hospitalizations, there's a, a good trend happening there in hospitalization rates. And, and so while I think the, the numbers actually went up today on hospitalizations, it, it trending is going down. So we're glad to see that coming out of the curve from the holiday period. So looking at just Guadalupe and Comal County, as I mentioned, we have 808 active cases for Guadalupe County, and Comal County is at 620. Guadalupe County was up this week, but Comal County was starting to, to go down too. So that, that was good, because they were the ones that had a 50, 51% positivity rate last week. The school district is a little up this week at 90 cases. They have 63 staff members and 27, oh, excuse me, opposite. They have 27 staff cases and 63 student cases currently, for a total of 90 cases. Testing positivity overall in the state is at 13% for molecular and just under 7%. But if you look at the trend, so the, the slides are the, picture on the, the left is the molecular testing, and the right is the, excuse me, total, this is our total testing, this is the positives. But what I wanted to show you with this was, you can see this is that summertime trend, and this is where we were, is that post-holiday season, and you can see it's coming down off of that. So just as a general trend, it's encouraging to see that some of that testing positivity is starting to regain some of that control, which is, is good just generally for us. Again, with daily new cases, we had climbed up significantly from where we were at the summertime level, and again, you can start to see that trend come down. We've had a couple of high days, but generally, the trend is coming back down. So that's positive news. This was something really positive. I felt like we have been over 20% with our hospitalization rate for a while now. You remember, this is the rate that we look at. We need it to be under 15% for seven consecutive days to increase that capacity back to that 75% occupancy. And for a while, it's been well above 20%, and it was climbing to 24 and steadily climbing. We have seen a progressive trend downward, which is really encouraging, and the fact that we've been under 20% for several days is really good. I also point out what it looks like around the state. So if you remember back two weeks ago, this entire chart was red. Every place in the state was above 15% hospitalization. And as you can see now, we have several areas, trauma service areas, that are back in a, a good state, that lower than 10% gives them the ability to, excuse me, lower than 15% gives them the ability to open up to that 75% capacity again, but then under 10% is really pretty manageable at that point. So that's where we were at that low period, is under that 10%. And hopefully, we'll get back there soon. But you can see several areas around the state getting there. Hospitalizations for Bear County, so we are, from last week, have trended down. I think today, they're a little up from where they were the last couple of days, but, but generally, since last week, you can see that the trend is still declining. So today, we have 1,176 patients in our trauma service area that are COVID-positive in the hospital systems. Of those, 399 patients are in ICU and an additional 200, some of those are ICU, the 232 are on ventilator. So again, while it's still high numbers and it's still concerning levels, we are seeing a trend downward, and I think that's the positive in, in what's going on with our, our numbers right now. Take any questions?
All right, thank you, Ms. Hall. Counsel, questions? Yes, Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I just have one question. You mentioned, and I should know the answer to this, whenever the positivity rate, it's under 10%, then restaurants can go back to 75% capacity. At what point can it go to 100%? Is it 5% or just when the governor says, or what?
So it's 15%. So once we're under 15% hospitalization for seven consecutive days, we can increase our occupancy to 75.
Sorry.
So to go to 100% would be that the, the declaration had ended and they lifted the, the restrictions at all.
Yeah, I was looking at the green, the cities in green, so those are already at 75%. But when we get under-
So anything that is not in red on that chart?
Yeah, go back to the chart if you want, that one.
So this one here, so everything that's in yellow and green means that they are under that 15%?
So yellow and green can be at 75%?
Can be at 75% occupancy only, well, and that's if they, if they've been at under 15% for seven consecutive days, right?
Yep, got it, got it.
This is a snapshot for today, or yesterday.
Yeah, so we're, when we climb down under 15%, which it looks like we're starting to, we can go to 75%, but we can't go to 100% till the emergency declaration ends.
Those restrictions, yeah, would have to be lifted.
Yeah. All righty.
Okay, counsel, any other comments or questions? No, Ms. Hall, I'd just like to say, you know, well, to our community, I, I understand the concerns and the frustration regarding the obstacles trying to get the vaccine. I know it's tough. The Internet filled up within minutes, and our phone system was busy, but volunteers still continued to book appointments, I think up to an hour and a half after 9 o'clock. So an hour and a half, there was still an opportunity. And this is what happens when the demand for this vaccine is high, and our community receives a limited, a limited supply of these doses. I just want to express my gratitude to you, the team, and the staff, and the volunteers that helped us get past this point, and there's still a lot more to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for your services.
Mm-hmm. Counsel, any other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on then. Item number seven is only a monthly update on capital improvement projects, and information packets were provided to council and available for, for the public viewing on our homepage, shirts.com. So we'll move on to the requests and announcements. Dr. Brown, any further announcements?
I have nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, any updates or information requested from staff? Yes, Councilmember Scott?
Yes, I would like to revisit our tree mitigation policies for the city.
Okay, all right. Dr. Brown, can you ensure she gets the information, and then we'll see whether or not she wants to put it on the future agenda item? Okay. All right. All right, any other requests or information? Okay.
Oops, one more. I'm sorry, I just realized, the Friends of Shirts at Crescent Bend, they have flagged me down probably four times by now, and I was remiss in not bringing this to council, I apologize. They wanted to get speed bumps in Crescent Bend because people have been speeding through there, and then I witnessed one motorcycle, he's probably going 50, but there's like a white pickup truck that always speeds around. I think some teenagers are going there and going really fast. And so the Friends of Crescent Bend, that organization, they were deeply concerned, and they wanted to try to slow down the traffic in there. And so I don't know if that's an agenda item or just a policy or what, but the, you know, my bad, I meant to do that before now.
Well, yeah, well, okay, thank you, Dr. Brown. Okay, counsel, any other information packages that you want? Counsel, is there any items you'd like to place on future agenda items? All right, we'll move on then to announcements by council members. Mayor Pro-Tam Whitaker?
As far as what we did this week, I attended the, the phone bank this morning, well, actually most of the day. I think that, you know, there was a great group of volunteers there, and I was very thankful for each person that showed up. And I think it was especially encouraging that every person that got through on the phone, I think, was very excited, obviously, because they had this opportunity to get the vaccine. But it was a very positive experience for them, working really hard. I think everybody was working really hard to get as many phone calls as we could, and get people on wait lists and everything. So for the people who were able to get through, I think it was a great experience, a positive experience. I think the volunteers did a great job. Mayor, his wife did a great job, and Summer Hall also, you know, put together a, a great plan, and I think it's just going to get better each week, but I think it's a great way to start.
All right. Counselmember Davis?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Counselmember Scott?
Not at this time, but I wish I could volunteer like y'all. You've been doing a yeoman's work, and congratulations, and thank you very much.
Counselmember Dollar?
Just a couple of events this last week, last Thursday, the Sibolo Valley Local Government Corporation meeting, and then on Saturday, I stopped by and checked out the Health and Wellness Fair that the chamber was putting on. It's a really good event, so thanks to everybody involved with that.
Counselmember Skagliola?
Nothing new and novel.
Counselmember Hayward?
Couple of things. This weekend, not only did I attend the Chamber Health and Wellness Fair, I actually sat at a booth for the Guadalupe County Coalition, Community Coalition, which is the drug addiction or addiction that we, you know, the community coalition, and we had lots of people stop over. And there was just a couple of things that was pointed out that a lot of people may not know, that apparently now there is a thing called dissolvable tobacco, and it looks like Tic Tacs, that the kids can be exposed to, and you think they're eating Tic Tacs. And then another one is powder alcohol. So apparently, it's possibly illegal here, but not knowing whether people do it, and there was a brochure, and what kids do is take a bottle of water, and it's a powder, it looks like Kool-Aid, and you may not know that your kids are drinking. So it's just some things to be aware of when you do that, but it was a fantastic event. I think lots of people were serviced, and even with this organization, Amy Austin did a fantastic job, and she was able to make connections with our EMS and a couple of other organizations to try and partner with things. And so that was a fantastic job. And then today, during the call center, I was there, pretty much, I was there all day. And I think it was, it was put on well, it was a good event. I think everyone that could get in, got in. I do know that a lot of people that ended up on the waitlist would say that the fact that they actually got to talk to a person to get on the waitlist, and we didn't just put, have the phone go dead when the appointments were gone, and they were just overwhelmed just the fact that they could get on the waitlist. So I think it was a fantastic turnout. As far as the volunteers, they were absolutely amazing, and thived right in and didn't mind doing it, and just kept going and kept going. I mean, we were getting fault, we had to stop people from taking calls, I think around 5:00 o'clock. And I think it's just a fantastic thing that we're offering it. I think we need to keep going, and I know it'll get better over time. That's all.
All right. Counselmember Brown?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. The time is now 7:17. We stand adjourned. Caleb, Caleb?